From Rockland down to Garrett. I’m here today to testify in favor of LD-471 and 606. I want everybody to know that as a veteran and as a member of the American Legion, we are not opposed to freedom of choice. After all, that’s what veterans go to war for, so we can maintain our freedoms. But I do have some things to say about polio. When I was a kid, polio was the name of the game. And we were told, “Don’t swim in the Nashua River because if you swim in the Nashua River, you’re going to get polio.” Only because there were a few kids who swam in the Nashua River contacted polio. So there was a scare tactic there. So I could go on. In the military, we have no choice. We have to get our shots. But on autism, I’ve seen a couple of kids come down from autism in my neighborhood. But I look at it, all of a sudden autism is coming about. Well, that’s what we thought a few years ago when polio started. You know, who are you going to stop this? But somebody came up with some kind of treatment that gave us a shot and took care of the problem. But the American Legion and most veterans support LD-471 and 606. And I hope you people on this committee will give it some serious thought and think about what’s happening to my great-grandchildren who are just starting school. And thank God, thank God they had their measles shots because a couple of kids in their class contacted measles. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Seeing no questions, thank you for your testimony. Next, we’ll hear from Jerry Greenwell.
Senator Brackley, Representative Gattin, and other distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services, good morning. My name is Jerry Burke Greenwell, a proud constituent of Representative Fran Head, who unfortunately is not here this morning, and I am from Battle. I come before you today in support of LD-471. Twelve years ago, our family suffered a tremendous loss, and it changed our lives forever. Our son Jerry, an otherwise healthy young adult, woke feeling like he had the flu. By that evening, he was fighting for his life at Maine Medical Center. As we stood idly by, unable to do anything to help, we watched Jerry fade before our eyes. Despite huge doses of antibiotics, each small glimmer of hope was quickly followed by yet another devastating blow. Despite treatment and round-the-clock care, three days later, Jerry lost his battle and died as a result of meningitis. Our anger and grief quickly turned to disbelief and an overwhelming sense of guilt when we were told that Jerry’s death could have been prevented had we only known that this disease was potentially preventable with a vaccine. Only those who’ve experienced the devastating consequences of this and other life-threatening diseases can truly comprehend the impact this can have on a parent. For our family, the importance of immunization will forever be uppermost in our minds. We were very proud of our son Jerry, although a mere statistic to some, he was to many, a very special young man. His life was full of promise, or so we thought. Deadly diseases like meningococcal meningitis can strike anyone, anywhere, anytime. Even one child lost is one too many. I am concerned that parents just don’t understand the severity of this disease and the reality that by the time it’s diagnosed, it can be too late. Within hours, it can lead to devastating complications, causing permanent disabilities and in cases like Jerry’s death. Ten to fifteen percent of those diagnosed with meningitis will die. Of those who survive, one in five will live with permanent disabilities such as loss of limbs, brain damage, kidney function, and hearing loss. The rate of diagnosis and death in Maine reflects the same trend. The CDC has ranked Maine as one of the top states whose parents opt not to vaccinate their children. We are trending in the wrong direction, with more parents receiving exemptions during the last school year than in previous years. This trend is very disturbing and terribly dangerous, so I come before you today asking for you to tighten the current philosophical exemption law. LD-471 would require written documentation signed by a health care practitioner and would help to educate families, medical professionals, and others about bacterial meningitis. And although not all that I wish it to be, it is a good compromise. Those who choose not to vaccinate jeopardize not just the health of their own children, but also the health of those around them. There are some who can’t be immunized for medical reasons because they are too young. It’s important to keep in mind the decision of one can impact many others. As a parent of one lost from a vaccine-preventable disease, I wish that I had been better educated about the disease and appropriate prevention approaches. If I had, I have no doubt that our son would be alive today. Please take action now and spare other families from experiencing this tragedy. Thank you very much for your time and thoughtful consideration. I would be happy to address any questions.
Thank you for sharing your story. Seeing no questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we’ll hear from Shannon Gervais of Buxton.
Good morning, Senator Brackley, Representative Gattin, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. My name is Shannon Gervais, and I am a resident of Buxton. I am here to speak in support of LD-471, an act to improve childhood vaccination rates in Maine. Five years ago, my son Michael started kindergarten, and I was worried about him making friends and if his brother would miss him all day. I was not worried about him coming in contact with infectious disease. Just two weeks after he started school, he was taken to the hospital by ambulance for breathing problems. He was soon diagnosed with pneumonia and involved his lungs. Within a few days, we were told to prepare for the worse. Mike was in a coma, and his antibiotic-resistant pneumonia was not improving. He was also later diagnosed with HUS. His body developed sepsis, hypertension, and renal failure. I was in shock and had no idea how he could have something so serious. After lung surgery to remove the pneumonia and dialysis for his kidneys, I was told he was going to make it. He was at Maine Medical Center for a month, and he was out of kindergarten for three months. Trying to figure out why he got so sick, he was referred to an immunologist just five months after he first got sick. He was feeling sick again that day when we met the doctor. The doctor listened to his chest and told me to rush him to the hospital for X-rays. He was diagnosed again with bacterial pneumonia, again. I always followed the schedules for vaccines for Michael, and he was up to date, although after testing, it showed that Michael’s body had no response to the pneumonia vaccine or the Hib vaccine. He was re-vaccinated with those vaccines, and later it showed his body poorly recognized the vaccines again. Michael has had pneumonia five times now. He has diminished lung capacity and can never breathe like healthy children. His steroid used to breathe better has given him adrenal insufficiency. I have to worry every day if he comes in contact with someone that can transfer pneumonia or other bacteria to him. I don’t believe his body could handle going through that again. If my son develops a respiratory illness, it can easily turn into pneumonia. Whooping cough to some people may be annoyance, but it can kill my child. I urge you to support LD-471, which would help parents get scientific information about vaccines from their children’s health care provider. I truly rely on other families making sure their children are vaccinated in order to protect my son and our family from a terrible tragedy. I need my community to care about my child and to support his health. Vaccinations do that, and I am very grateful to all those who immunize their children so that mine can have as a healthy childhood as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your story. Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Next, we’ll hear from Jenna Maynor of Orno.
Hi. My name is Jenna Maynor, and I am here today as a parent. I live in Orno, Maine. I have more reason to distrust vaccines than lots of folks do, and I want to talk for a little while about why, in fact, I think that we’re at a critical epidemic level of needing to really look at the importance of vaccines, and I’m here begrudgingly supporting 471. I can close my eyes and put myself at Penn State Hershey Medical Center on March 17, 2008, where I was there to rule out a diagnosis of autism for my son. I had been the children’s policy person for Governor Rendell, had access to every resource you can imagine as a children’s advocate, and still I had a child I didn’t understand and figure out how best to serve. Remember waiting eight months for the appointment, two hours with my little five-year-old in the other room when she called me in and explained to me that thirty characteristics -- there were thirty characteristics to diagnose autism in a young child, and you needed twenty of them to meet the diagnosis. I sat there thinking, as Jacob turned on and off the light, had he probably had seventeen or eighteen of them? And of course, he had twenty-three. I sat there immediately, and as my heart sank of what did I do wrong, she looked me in the eyes and said, “There’s nothing you did. This is not about prenatal health. This is not about vaccines. Look at your family. You’ll see different of these characteristics on this list in different members of your family. It just happens that you and your husband brought together different genetics and environmental factors, nutrition, whatever. There are lots of factors, but part of it is a genetic predisposition.” I sat from that moment forward and decided to learn everything I could about autism, including being on boards of autism societies and talking to every national expert I could corner in a bar, and everybody who knows me knows that conferences I go to, I find places and find people to learn from. And I learned as much as I could about autism, and one of the things that became apparent to me is that as someone who for twenty years has advocated against stigma, when we talk about vaccinating and autism in the same sentence, all we do is perpetuate stigma towards brain disorders. There are brain differences, and brain differences are things we need to understand, not judge and stigmatize. I have more reason than most to distrust vaccines. My oldest daughter was born in 1999 and had the new rotavirus vaccine that caused constipation in babies. I remember listening to NPR and finding out that there was a negative side effect from a vaccine that I had not paid attention to as a brand-new mom and felt really responsible for that. So from that moment forward, this is 1999, my son was born in 2002, I questioned everything any doctor told me. I’m not a big fan of the medical community. I’m not one who takes anything anybody tells me at face value. So I modified my sons and my daughters, both of my daughters’ vaccine schedules. I didn’t allow more than two shots at any one point, not because there was a single bit of scientific reason to do that, just because I decided as a mom, I didn’t want all that stuff at one point in time. I read everything I could, found nothing that connected autism to any outcome or any outcome from vaccines that I viewed as more important than protecting my children. So I really think that as someone who has, A, had a negative vaccine outcome in terms of -- she was a little constipated -- and as someone who trusted vaccines implicitly in the beginning and didn’t trust them at all as my children went on, I still chose for my children and for my community and for the other children who can’t make the choice to ensure that my children were vaccinated. So I just want you to think about the information you’ll hear around how low our statistics are around vaccination and realize that allowing a philosophical exemption when consulted with a medical professional is the only fair compromise. For what’s a really complicated and emotional issue, we have to meet in the middle, and from my perspective, that’s the only acceptable middle.
Seeing no questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we’ll hear from Laura Blaisdell of Southport.
Good morning, Senator Brackley, Representative Gattin, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. My name is Laura Blaisdell. I’m a South Portland resident, a wife of a residential camp director, mother of two boys, and among other things, a board-certified public health-trained pediatrician. I’m here today in support of LD-471, an act to improve childhood vaccination rates in Maine. LD-471 addresses the fact that Maine now has the fifth-highest rate of immunization exemptions in the U.S. by ensuring that essential vaccination conversations happen between health care providers and parents. Today, you will hear and you probably already have heard all sides of the vaccine discussion in what is a longstanding and increasingly vitriolic debate. Vaccination is a personal health decision, but the nature of infectious disease requires careful consideration on how one’s personal decisions can threaten the health of other minority communities. The fact that LD-471 is in front of you is a reflection of how hard it is for families to find a quiet, reflective, non-lobby place to discuss vaccines to their children. There is no one vaccine decision that is right for all people. Each vaccine has various reasons for being, differing characteristics and contraindications, and protects against infectious disease of varying infectivity, morbidities, and mortalities. As such, vaccine decisions have become complicated and nuanced, and the historical all-or-none approach to devastating diseases like polio no longer serve our parents who are in our offices every day trying to decide how best to protect their children. As if that were not enough of a conundrum, sources of information about vaccines themselves are conflicting, changing, and lack credibility. Well-meaning parents come to child wellness visits with websites, research articles, books, and plenty of advice. Nearly all have done the research that makes meaning to them, but when faced with actually deciding to vaccinate, a fair number of reasonable parents will delay or refuse vaccine as a logical choice. Thus, vaccine exemptions have and will continue to grow. What most parents need is not just the right information, but the combination of the right information with the right conversation with the right person. Parents need credible conversations and help assimilating information in a way that’s meaningful for them. This is what health care providers are trained and ethically obligated to do. What is at debate today, we must remember, is not the science of vaccines, the safety of vaccines, the history of vaccine additives or mandatory vaccination. We are not debating the dangers of vaccine-preventable diseases or their curability, and with LD-471, we are not debating taking away choices or whether you are a good or bad parent for your decision. The debate before this esteemed body is this: What is the reasonable responsibility for freedom of personal choice when choice and community are bound together in health? When parents refuse what is easily considered one of the greatest medical advances in our collective history, is it sensible to ensure their decision is well-reasoned and informed? Do recurrent outbreaks signal that the threat of infectious disease is real and severe enough to necessitate action against the rising tide of vaccine exemptions? Is it not rational for our community to ask its members to talk with a trusted, trained, experienced health care professional to give a vaccine refusal decision the weight it deserves? Please support LD-471 as a necessary and reasonable resolution to addressing vaccine exemptions in Maine. Thank you for considering my views, and I’ll be happy to respond with any questions.
Thank you for keeping right within the time limit.
All directions.
Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Next, we’ll hear from, again, I haven’t managed to pronounce this, Avanel Dane?
Dane.
Dane. Oh, that’s a P there, not a D. All right.
Hey.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Senator Brackley, and Chairman Gattin, and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Avanel Dane. I’m a practicing registered nurse living in Bath, Maine. I’ve been a nurse who cares for maternal and child health and pediatric patients for over thirty years, and I work in the mid-coast Maine area. And I am here in support of LD-471, an act to improve vaccination rates in the state of Dane. It is an important legislation. Let me tell you why I feel strongly about supporting vaccines for children and their effectiveness in protecting the public’s health. I practiced nursing in years prior to having vaccines available for contagious diseases like measles, mumps, and chickenpox. And frankly, when the polio vaccine was available, I was a student at the University of Pennsylvania. Before vaccines were available, when measles broke out in schools, not every child recovered. I’ve seen children with measles and sepsulitis, which has a high rate of mortality. I’ve seen patients living in iron lungs because they became ill with polio virus. Today, these diseases are entirely available because of the availability of vaccines. I have cared for children who are compromised immune systems because they had received chemotherapy due to cancers or as recipients of organ transplants. It’s vitally important that these children receive vaccines, especially the varicosele vaccine, to prevent chickenpox. Sadly, when a child becomes ill with chickenpox and has a weakened immune system, the disease is often deadly, but can be prevented with a vaccine. If all children receive a varicosele vaccine, the chemical effect protects everyone from the spread of the communicable disease. Protecting the entire community with vaccines has the benefit of helping children who have suppressed immune systems. I am also in support of providing hepatitis B for all newborns because this vaccine prevents children from developing chronic liver disease. Protecting the public from preventable infectious diseases is our first public health publication. When we protect the public from becoming infected with preventable communicable diseases, we also protect the quality of life for all Maine citizen and health of the workforce. As a matter of fact, when the public is healthy and protected from the risk of preventable infectious diseases like measles, mumps, chickenpox, polio, hepatitis, meningitis, we can provide a healthier education system because the children will not miss school, the weak to spread out of illnesses, and parents will not worry about missing work when their children are ill or at risk of becoming ill with infectious diseases during an epidemic. Moreover, in my experience, I have never seen any child with autistic syndrome that can be remotely correlated with a vaccine. On the other hand, I have cared for many children who were infected with vaccine-preventable illnesses, who suffered because they had no vaccine available. I urge you to support vaccine availability for all people, especially children. It’s proven to be a cost-effective wellness policy that benefits everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this public health policy, and I feel strongly about and how it will improve the wellness of many people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Donald Burgess of Kennebunk.
Good morning, Senator Brackley, Representative Gattin, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. My name is Dr. Donald Burgess. I’m a board-certified developmental behavioral pediatrician from Kennebunk who also practices general pediatrics. I am here today to speak in support of LD-471, an act to improve childhood vaccinations rates in Maine. In my developmental pediatric practice, I care for over 200 children and young adults who carry a diagnosis of an autistic spectrum disorder. I practice evidence-based medicine in caring for children who are on the autistic spectrum and frequently discuss immunizations with these families. Many of my families have initial concerns about vaccines, but many of them choose to fully immunize their children based on the scientifically-based education I provide for them. During the recent concerns around measles in children in California and a more recent child that exposed hundreds of people to measles at the Kidery Trading Post, I received several phone calls from parents with children on the autistic spectrum who had previously chosen not to give the measles vaccine to their child, asking for an appointment to get that vaccine. Current research has not determined a single cause of autism, and it appears there may be several different causes of this disorder. Genetics, infections, continue to be studied by the scientific community, and as a developmental pediatrician, I continue to support these efforts to look for the actual causes of autism. What these studies continue to show consistently is that there is no link to the MMR vaccine or any vaccine with the ever-increasing rate of children diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. One well-known study from Denmark published in the New England Journal of Medicine in 2002 looked at over 500,000 children for any association between the MMR vaccine and autistic spectrum disorder. There was no association found in this extremely large cohort of children. In 2012, a Cochrane review looked at a number of studies related to MMR and autism. This review included data on more than 14 million children and showed no link between the vaccine and autism. The most recent study on this subject was published on April 21, 2015, in the Journal of the American Medical Association. This unique study looked at 95,000 children to determine if younger siblings who had an older sibling with the diagnosis of ASD had any increased risk of autistic spectrum disorder related to the MMR vaccine. Again, there was no association between getting the MMR vaccine and risk of autism even in this higher-risk population. Personally, I am the father of 13-year-old twin boys who are fully vaccinated with all of the recommended vaccines. My wife and I based our decision on the scientific evidence available that the benefits of the vaccines significantly outweigh the risks. In 2008, I responded to a hepatitis A outbreak at my twin son’s elementary school in Kennebunk where it, which had entered the community through an adoptive child from another country. Over 30 children and many adults became very ill with hepatitis A during this outbreak. In response to the outbreak, Maine CDC held immunization clinics to vaccinate all of the students and faculty at the school to prevent further spread of the virus, as there is no treatment for this illness. Less than 1% of parents declined the vaccine, showing the clinics, and my sons were among those students that were vaccinated. Hepatitis A vaccine is now included in the list of recommended childhood vaccines because of a number of school outbreaks that occurred that particular year. Vaccination remains the only effective treatment for hepatitis A. In over 20 years of practice, I have experienced the tragic death of an 18-month-old girl with hemorrhagic chickenpox. This is a rare but frequently fatal complication of chickenpox, a disease which was felt from the past to be a benign illness of childhood. I have seen children with HEM and pneumococcal meningitis develop cerebral palsy, seizures, or die from the disease, which is easily prevented with the Hib and Prednar vaccines. I have seen a boy with meningococcal meningitis develop severe cerebral palsy from the infection, and only recently, at the age of 15 years, he walked for the very first time. Meningococcal meningitis is completely preventable with administration of the meningococcal vaccine available today. Despite the fact that some of the families of the children within my practice choose not to vaccinate their children, I do not discharge them from my care. I understand the fear instilled by the media that drives the reluctance of some families to vaccinate their children. I believe that continued appropriate education can alleviate the unrealistic fears of vaccines. Thank you for considering my experience, knowledge, and views on the bill. I’d be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Representative Heinem.
Thank you for being here today. Can you talk about, you noted the 2012 Cochrane review. Can you tell us about Cochrane reviews, if you get within your knowledge base, and also at this study that looked at data from 14 million children and showed no link between the vaccine and autism?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I can make a couple of kind of broad statements about it. I’m not, you know, I’m not totally educated on Cochrane themselves, but basically, there’s two studies out there looking at MMR vaccine and autism that Cochrane did. As far as I know, there may be a few more that I haven’t seen. And basically, what they do is they look at previously done studies and looked at the validity of the study as far as is the data sound, is it, you know, they really look at these studies.
Which is a?
Cochrane.
Yeah, which is a?
It’s a group that does these reviews.
Group of scientists.
Scientists, correct. So basically, what they do is they look at a number of studies and kind of pull the data together or pull it all together and try to, basically making sure they’re sound studies is kind of the first step. The next step is to bring the numbers together so you have, instead of each study, you have a number of studies together that looks at a bigger population.
Thank you.
All right, additional, any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Next, we’ll hear from Doug Michael of Bar Harbor. Next, we'll hear from Doug Michael of Bar Harbor. And we just got a note from security that, like I said, fire code standards, if you're standing, if you don't have an actual chair, we do have to ask you, we do have to ask you to, if you're doing cameras and stuff, that's one thing, but we do have to ask you to go over to the Wellness Center and listen there. My hands are tied on this. It's just a fire code standard, so we really appreciate it. Representative Katine.
Thanks. And again, you know, the process of the call that we're going to read the names of 10 people, decline four, 10 people, rep, decline again. So again, you'll have ample notice, and again, if you're not, I understand this is a lot, you're with a lot of interest in this issue, but if you're not queued up to testify, there really isn't a reason why you need to sit in the room all day. So again, please respect that, and if you see empty chairs, please feel free to fill them in. Thank you.
And if for any reason you missed your initial opportunity to speak, we will fit you in. It's not a, it's not a, yeah, we're going to be here a long time. All right, welcome, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning, Senator Brakley, Representative Katine, and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Doug Michael, and I'm the chief community health officer with EMHS, an integrated health care system employing more than 10,000 Maine professionals who provide high-quality prevention and treatment services to more than 100,000 covered lives through our Beacon Accountable Care Organization and at more than 1.3 million outpatient visits each year. I am here today on behalf of EMHS members whose mission is to improve the health and well-being of all Maine people. We thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony and support of LD-471, an act to improve childhood vaccination rates in Maine, and in opposition to LD-1076, an act to enact the Vaccine Consumer Protection Program. You have my written testimony. I will speak on LD-471 and register our opposition to LD-1076. In Maine, as you've heard, childhood immunization rates have declined and have been following a national trend. We've reached dangerously low levels. In 2013, an estimated 68% of children between the ages of 1 and 1/2 and 3 were up to date on the recommended series of vaccination, the seventh-lowest rate in the nation. This national trend, we're seeing of parents refusing or avoiding vaccines due to fear, confusion, and a preponderance of false information circulating on the internet. LD-471 promotes informed decision-making among parents, ensuring that they receive credible scientific information about immunizations and vaccine-preventable diseases. LD-471 takes a reasonable approach to balancing the rights of parents to exercise parental choice with a collective responsibility that we share to preserve and protect the public's health. LD-471 maintains a parent's right to opt out of immunizations for their child's medical, religious, or philosophical reasons, and, as you've heard, requires the parent or guardian seeking that exemption to present the written documentation signed by a health care practitioner who has reviewed with the parent factual, science-based information about both the risks as well as the benefits of immunization that is consistent with the scientific data and information published by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. I want to thank you today for the opportunity to support LD-471, a sensible approach to balancing the rights responsibilities and informed decision-making while promoting and protecting the public's health. Happy to take any questions.
Seeing no questions, thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Lynn Connolly at Bedford. Sure, that'd be perfectly acceptable.
Senator Brakley, Representative Katine, and members of the Joint Standing Committee. My name is Dr. Deborah Hadler. I'm here on behalf of Martin's Point to offer testimony in favor of LD-606 and LD-471. I am associate practice medical director of pediatrics, and I work in Brunswick. I've been a practicing pediatrician for the last 23 years, 17 of which have been in Maine. I received my medical degree from Cornell University and did my pediatric training at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. I currently live in Harpsway. In 2009, I cared for hundreds of children, including my own, sickened by H1N1, a new pandemic influenza virus. This flu virus strain infected over 60 million people nationally, almost 1/5 of our population. It resulted in hundreds of thousands of hospitalizations and more than 10,000 deaths. Unlike seasonal flu, it disproportionately sickened the young, and in Maine, there were 19 confirmed deaths. During the pandemic, our office was inundated with sick children. Our days manic as we cared for them and fielded phone calls for worried parents. When the vaccine became available, it was like someone flipped a switch, and everything quieted. In my medical career, I witnessed firsthand the devastating consequences that come from infectious disease. I cared for a toddler who died from septic shock as a complication of chickenpox, and I agonized for the family as their child's skin melted away and she slowly succumbed to meningococcal disease. These are now vaccine-preventable diseases. I've never seen polio, tetanus, or diphtheria, an illness that used to take 20% of its victims. These illnesses, however, have not gone away. We have seen a resurgence of measles in California, and on April 20th, someone with measles went shopping in Kidery. Polio is still active in Africa and the Far East, and it has reemerged at lightning speed in war-torn Syria. In other words, these illnesses are an airplane rideaway. They could appear in any public place at any public time. Most of today's parents cannot recall a time when one in 10 babies died before their first birthday from an infectious disease, and just one generation ago, polio ravaged our country. Increasingly on the subject of vaccines, many claim to misguided and irrational fears. To paraphrase Ula Biss in her nationally-recognized book, which I highly recommend, "On Immunity and Inoculation", "As with any other strongly-held beliefs, our fears are dear to us. When we encounter information that contradicts our beliefs, we tend to doubt the information, not our beliefs." However, as policymakers, you need to under-